Thank you, everybody, for coming. It is getting close to 7:30, but we're going to start with our public hearing on our 2021-2022 budget that was originally supposed to start at 7:15. Our closed session went a little long, but we'll begin that now. This is an opportunity for the public to make any comments related to the 2021-22 budget. So if anybody wishes to speak, now's the time to do so.
Is there anyone here for the public hearing?
All right, hearing and seeing nobody approach, and we're going to assume that nobody's here, so we can close that. And we'll open the public meeting of the school board. Today is the 23rd, 2021, and if we can note the role, Aneeshah will be back in a second, but stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to move on to recognitions and presentations, and that is our tenure teacher recognition. So, Dr. Byn, would you like to congratulate all these newly tenured teachers?
I would, and if you would be willing, we have some certificates up front. If you'd be willing to hand them out when we call them. We will call your name and ask you to just come up and be recognized. For our audience, achieving tenure status in District 25 is something that has great value. It means that an employee has shown great positive impact on teaching and learning in our district and on our students' growth, and that we value their employment and each person being a part of our community, and we want to extend tenure to them, recognizing their work here and our interest in them continuing to have that impact on our students for many years to come. So I know they couldn't all make it tonight, but we would like to welcome our tenured teachers, starting with Ivy Hill, Kaitlyn Shewski. Is Kaitlyn here tonight? From Olive Mary Sit, we have four teachers who have achieved tenure status, Tamara Carlson, Betty Henderson, Kim Cusiel, and Amy Jo Naughton. Would they come forward, please? From Patton Elementary School, Robin McEwen. It's Robin here tonight. Congratulations to Robin. From South Middle School, we have three people achieving tenure, Jennifer Bornhorst, Kevin Steck, and Michael Watson. Come forward, please. From Thomas Middle School, we also have three people, Dorothea Matanovic, Heather Nisbet, and Riley Wharton. We have two employees from Westgate Elementary School, Stephanie Bizarro and Katherine Heidrick. Thank you. And from Windsor Elementary School, we have five employees achieving tenure status, Colleen Higgins, Katie Carish, Melissa LeBlanc, Amy McKellen, and Megan Olson. Would you please come forward, please? Congratulations and thank you, and welcome to our newly tenured employees. We look forward to a long, positive relationship with you continuing to impact our students. You are, of course, welcome to stay for the night, but you may also go home if you have work to do. Thank you. The next recognition that we have tonight is that each meeting over the next few months, we'll be inviting our principals from our schools to come and just share a few words with the Board of Education, some highlights that they're looking forward to for their year. So together tonight, we welcome South Middle School Principal, Dr. Jim Morrison, and Thomas Middle School Principal, Lori Naumowitz.
All right. Thank you for having us this evening. We're very excited, and, you know, as a community, we wanted to do this together as a community of middle schools, that we are so connected together. So we're going to start out with our first part here, with what we stand for.
Absolutely. So this year, our theme that unites both campuses, both middle school campuses, is be brave. Be brave, for there is always light, if only we're brave enough to see it, if only we're brave enough to be it. This year, the theme was created by our amazing Library and Media Center Directors, Mrs. Becky Fano and Mrs. Kelly O'Kelly. The theme was inspired by the talented poet Amanda Gorman, who imparted wisdom beyond her years at the U.S. Presidential inauguration. Our middle school students began the year by reflecting on the books with characters they read about that demonstrated what it takes to be brave. Brave enough to be a friend, brave enough to take a stand, brave enough to listen, brave enough to ask for help, brave enough to do the right thing when no one's looking, brave enough to forgive, brave enough to fight for those who cannot, brave enough to be who you are, brave enough to speak up, and brave enough to start over. This theme serves as a great reminder for all of us during this difficult school year.
So our next part is our enrollment. So as you see, Thomas enrollment is 960 students, where South is only at 867. Both schools have increased for about 20 students per school from last year.
All right. So what are we excited about this year? So many things. For starters, seeing all of our students in person each and every day is just amazing. They are so fun and funny and great to be around. We're really enjoying that part.
The second thing that we're looking, that we're excited about this year is the implementation of the Ruler Program. It's our SEL, Social Emotional Learning, approach. We actually kicked off today with our first lesson at South. It's why emotions matter. It went very well, and kids were really receptive of it, and our teachers thought it went really well. So we're very excited about that.
And lastly, the ability to offer all of our extracurricular activities means so much to us at the middle school level. Not only are we looking to enrich their lives academically, but to create well-rounded students and to find something that each student can connect to the school with is really one of our goals that helps us a ton as a middle schooler. Are there any questions or anything?
I'll just highlight for the board that both schools did put on your seats some school swag that you can wear when you're visiting. I suggest you wear the South swag to South and the Thomas swag to Thomas, but you can make that decision.
Well, thank you very much for having us.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you again. We did have the opportunity to tour South, which Dr. Morrison did a great job showing us around and showing us all the great things that the kids are doing and just how it's great to have them back in the classroom and how excited they are to be back day in and day out. And the board members that were there really enjoyed it, and thank you much for taking us around and taking time out of your day to show us what wonderful things are happening in our schools. Thank you. All right, moving on, this is the public community input, and this is where the public may address the board. And I read the script earlier, but I'll read it again. "The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have comment to make about business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values of thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and operate its meetings in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow the following guidelines. Address the board only at the time provided in the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. Identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allotted time to conserve time to allow a maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and courteous. The board requests that you not make any statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community." We do have, I'd say, a substantial amount of applications tonight, so if we could keep it to the three minutes, we're going to hold that, and then after that, we'll go to submit it online, comments as well. Starting, we have Greg Lindy.
My name is Greg Lindy. As I said, I am a social studies teacher and co-team leader at South Middle School. This is my 30th year in Arlington Heights, District 25. People who know me know how much I love teaching and how much I love my students and fellow staff members. People who know me really well know the only thing I love more is my family and my Savior, Jesus Christ. It's in my faith in God that has led me here tonight to seek justice and speak in truth and love. My story begins in July of 2020. My whole family and I came down with COVID. Ten months later, I had a hernia operation, and prior to the surgery, I had a series of blood tests. One of those tests confirmed that I had full antibodies to fight against COVID. You may have heard recently that Dr. Malone, the creator of mRNA vaccines, cited a major study in Israel indicating that the breadth and durability of the immune response with the natural infection was superior to that of the vaccine. Even if antibodies decrease, patients still have T cells and B cells that can last a lifetime. A few weeks ago, the governor of Illinois created a mandate that stated that all teachers in Illinois would need to be vaccinated or go through a testing at least once a week. At that point, I was not vaccinated and was faced with a difficult decision that I had to make quickly. I had several choices. Choice number one, I could fold the government pressure to get the vaccine, but based on my faith and my own conscience, I decided not to get the vaccine. As I said earlier, my immunization is as strong, if not stronger, than those who are vaccinated. I also felt that the efficacy of the vaccine is still in question. We know that people have died and have been injured as a result of the vaccine. That cannot be disputed. I know that people have gotten blood clots, shingles, autoimmune disease, and neurological problems following the shot. It has been well noted that men under the age of 30 have been seen to have enlarged hearts following the shot. And there are also people who I know who have ended up with a sore arm and symptoms for a couple of days, but we have no idea the long-term effects. Only time will tell. Choice two was to take a leave of absence. That would do little for me. It would leave me without an income, and seeing that I have a family to support, including a 91-year-old mother who lives with me, this would not work. Choice three was to do nothing and show up to work on Monday, September 27. I've often wondered, what would have been done? Would the police have been called? Would I have been handcuffed? That would have been a sight for my students to see. I have former students and a son-in-law that are Arlington Heights police officers. I would never want to put them in that position. Choice four was to retire several years before I intended. I sincerely appreciate that I am going to be receiving a pension, and I thank the Arlington Heights taxpayers that helped make that possible. I don't take that for granted. At the same time, I know that my income from my pension will be about half of what my pay would have been over the next few years. In addition, the thought of leaving teaching broke my heart. I feel that I am at the pinnacle of my teaching career and was looking forward to improve even more over the next few years. And there are two board members here tonight whose daughters that I teach and have had a pleasure to be with this past year. They can attest to my enthusiasm and love for what I do. I would have never thought of retiring if not for the mandate. My wife just said the other day, "I can't believe that just a little over five years ago, you were receiving the Arlington Heights Educator of the Year Award, and now you're leaving." Choice five was to get tested at least once a week. My thought was at first that the governor could create this current mandate, and no one stands up against it. What's going to stop him from creating a mandate that states that all teachers in Illinois will need the vaccine and there will be testing needed, or no testing needed? The choice of testing is the part that actually angered me the most. If people who have been vaccinated are still getting COVID and are able to transmit the virus, and all of us know this to be true, why would I have to be tested and they would not have to be tested? If our concern is the well-being of students and staff, why isn't everyone being tested? This has discrimination written all over it. Regardless of whether you're in favor or against the vaccine, you cannot deny this. For those of you who have shared on social media, what's the big deal? Why doesn't he just take the test? Why doesn't he just take the test each week? Being a history teacher, I know that there have been many times in history where citizens have allowed their government to take away the rights of others. As long as it's not you, it's okay if others are segregated. It's okay if the rights of others are taken away. It's okay if others are discriminated against. In every case, it starts out because of fear, and it always ends in tragedy. The question now is, will there be a district or community that will be willing to stand up for others' rights, to fight against discrimination, to say that even if we don't agree with the decision to remain unvaccinated, we feel it's your right to remain and have health decisions based on your faith and conscience? Will District 25 and the people of Arlington Heights be that district? Finally, can I just say thank you just real quickly? I want to say thank you to the board members, past and present. I want to thank Brian and Lori and Chris for making me feel special enough that every time you see me, that you give me a hug. So I thank you for that. I quickly thank you, South family members, for all that you've done and for being with my journey, being on my journey. To my family and friends who are here tonight, thank you for your support, and that includes my wife, Lisa, who has loved me unconditionally for 34 years. You are my rock and you are my hero. To my students, past and present, you are the reason I plan field trips to feed my starving children. You're the reason Mr. Zimmerman and I stayed until 5:30 on Friday nights playing ping-pong with you. You're the reason I liked Mondays as much as I liked Fridays, and the reason that the first day of every school year brought joy to my heart and every last day brought heartache. Because of you, I stand here tonight, standing for what is right, even if I'm standing alone. I'm thankful to God, who has loved me so much that he sent his only son to die for me, and he's blessed me to be in a district that I absolutely love and a community that I was proud of. You will always have a special place in my heart because you are my family, and as a family member, I pray that love, justice, and mercy will guide your decisions about the unvaccinated teachers in this district and not fear. Blessings to all of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Next, we move on to Colin Craig.
Good evening, board. Thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Colin Craig. I'm a 16-year teacher at Thomas Middle School. My entire adulthood has been at Thomas. I'm a health and physical educator. I'm passionate about what I do. I love my kids. Every year, I feel like I have, you know, 300 kids in addition to the two that we have. And teaching health is seriously one of the most fulfilling experiences of my entire life. Every single day, I come to work, and I teach something that they are going to carry with them the rest of their life. And there's no greater, like, privilege to be able to do that, to be able to speak truth to kids, to help them and guide them at the most confusing time of their life so that they can make the most well-informed decisions of their life. And every day, that is something I look forward to. Due to the recent mandate, coming this Monday, I will no longer be allowed to enter the school that has been my home for 16 years. It's a big thing, a big bite to chew off. I understand the district has taken the stance to support the mandate. Doesn't make it any easier. I want to speak here as well for many of the teachers that feel they're in the same boat, that have this tremendous decision to make, and they don't know what to do. I want to make it clear that I do oppose this mandate. I oppose the terms of what I need to do to keep and maintain the career that I've had for half of my life. But to understand why I'm against the mandate, why I'm against the testing, I also need to let you know why I'm against the vaccine in the first place. I hope and pray that the vaccine is effective, that it helps those who have taken it, who feel it has given them the comfort in this time. I truly hope that it protects those who have taken it for their protection. But my views and my concerns about the vaccine and the testing are rooted, one, in my faith as a Christian, and, two, through the lens of being a health educator. The Bible says that when you accept Jesus as your Savior, you are given the gift of the Holy Spirit to dwell within you. And the Bible says, "Your body is a temple of the Holy Spirit," that I'm not my own, but I was bought with a price. Therefore, I am to glorify God in my body. My life belongs to Him. My body belongs to Him, so I seek to do the most I can with what He has given me because at the end of my life, the only person I'm accountable is God. Now, as a health educator, I use that lens to evaluate many of the decisions that I make for my own physical health. And I have grave concerns over this vaccine, which also ties into why I'm concerned about the mandated testing. And many of these relate to what I teach as a health teacher. When we look at vaccines, a typical timeline of development is 10 to 15 years before it's made for the general public. Many people have tried to compare the polio vaccine to the COVID one. Polio was discovered in 1907. The vaccine came out in 1955. That is a long range of time to discover and create this vaccine, discover it, and prove its effectiveness. This COVID vaccine, people were getting it eight months after COVID was discovered. Similarly, every other vaccine has taken decades to be considered effective enough for human use, and there's no comparison to this vaccine and how quickly it's come onto the market. Already, the effectiveness is wearing off. If you look at Israel, one of the most heavily vaccinated countries in the world, the rates of COVID infections are soaring. Vaccinated people are clearly still getting COVID and can still spread COVID. So if we're truly standing on the pillar of health and safety, why are the vaccinated exempt from testing? It should be all or none.
They see several pages there. We need to stick to the three minutes.
I'll be quick. How much time?
You've exceeded the three minutes. If you get 15, 20 more seconds.
So in my health classes, I teach kids about drugs. Today, literally, we're teaching them not to put something in your body that you don't know what it's going to do to you. As Mr. Lindy spoke, when you look at what is going on with the vaccines, you have the VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Reaction Database. We have over 15,000 confirmed deaths right now from this vaccine, and the majority of these are not even getting confirmed. That is more than double every vaccine death put together in the last 30 to 40 years. You have rising rates of heart inflammation, heart attacks. In the last two months, we've known five people that have had heart attacks or strokes and died from the vaccine. We know several that have miscarriages. I teach my work with kids as well, when it comes to the media, to be very discerning about what you listen to. Right now, doctors and nurses all across the world, all across the world, are being silenced for speaking out about prophylactic and early treatment methods for COVID. They are not given a voice. They're losing their careers, they're losing their licenses, they're being censored and deplatformed. In the medical world, shouldn't we embrace collaboration? If they have means of healing COVID, why are we silencing doctors and nurses? You don't hear about it in the media because the media is silencing it, and I think that is very concerning. So we should be asking why.
Thank you. I really appreciate your comments, but we have to let the other people speak.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm pleased, I do respect everyone's comments. If we could, please, keep it to three minutes. I don't want to be rude, but I want to get as many people the opportunity to speak as we can tonight. Next, we have Jerry Berger.
Good evening. Mind if I raise this a little bit? I'll put it back down. My name is Jerry Berger. I'm the Westgate music teacher. I've had the honor and privilege of being a full-time music teacher at Westgate for over 20 years. During that time, I have served thousands of students, held nearly 100 music concert programs, helped direct and produce many, many student variety shows, performed in several ABC 25 staff variety shows, which raised money for ABC 25, and have enjoyed sharing the love of music with the students of Westgate. I've always considered it a privilege to be a trusted member of the District 25 staff, and I believe that I work with some of the best educators in the business. I'm here tonight because all of that is being jeopardized by the vaccine and testing mandates that were recently put into place by our governor and are being strictly enforced by District 25. When I returned last year after a leave of absence, I felt a new sense of purpose and a renewed appreciation for my position at Westgate. Thank you, Dr. Byn, for suggesting that I do that. We all know what kind of year it was, but the fine educators in our district did our jobs under extremely difficult circumstances, working with mitigations in place, teaching in masks for hours at a time without a break, et cetera, even before the vaccine was available, and all we were asked to do was affirm that we were healthy. Now, we're being asked, under threat of unpaid leave, leading to termination, to submit personal, private medical information and to simply be okay with COVID testing at least once per week, just to be allowed to enter our buildings and do our job. President Biden recently stated that, quote, "This is not about freedom or personal choice. It's about protecting yourself and those around you," end quote. I disagree with that statement. I believe it's both. As a Christian, I know that my freedom comes from God, not from men, and that it is to Him that I will one day have to give an account. I may be wearing a mask on the outside, but I'm a free-breathing person on the inside. I agree that this is about protecting both myself and those around me, especially my wife and children. That includes protecting our right to privacy. I believe these mandates violate that privacy, as does the form to sign up for the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing. As a side note, I watched the last board meeting, and I appreciated that one of you, I believe it was Mr. Conley, I couldn't really tell, it's kind of far away, asked the lawyer a great question about crossing the privacy line. I wanted to thank him for that. Honestly, I have agonized over this issue for weeks, but I just don't know what to do. I don't want to be terminated and leave my precious Westgate students, but I also know that I must stand up to this unfair executive order. The bottom line is this: Please consider acting quickly to protect all of the staff by rethinking compliance with the governor's mandate. Otherwise, you risk losing many fine educators and support personnel who have given years of their lives to serve this district. I'm one of them. I regret to say that I will not be able to comply with the COVID testing requirement at this time and that, as of Monday, I will not be allowed to enter the building or classroom I've called home for the past 25 years. It pains me to say that, but for now, I have no choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Brenda Miller. Brenda Miller.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brenda Miller. I'm the art teacher at Westgate, and I teach with Jerry. Been there for over 15 years. He's a phenomenal person to work with, and all I wanted to say was, as I've been trying to encourage him and listen to some of the things that he's wrestling with, I started to think a little bit about the quote, I think it's Edmund Burke. It's something like, "Evil persists when good men do nothing." And when I think of the men who have stood up here and told you their stories and told you what they're standing up for, I thought of that quote, and I thought, this evil that is being... is being perpetuated in our society and on our children will persist until we stand up and we say, "No more." And that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Renee Schlenhart.
I'm Renee Schlenhart. I live on Derbyshire, and I am in District 25, live right down from Windsor. First, I want to thank all of you guys again. You know, it's been a rough 18 months. It's been a long run. I thank all the teachers that made it work last year with all the mitigations and all the craziness and all the cases and all that fun stuff. Really appreciate these teachers speaking up today. Unfortunately, my daughter never got to have Mr. Lindy because I transferred her to St. Peter last year for eighth grade. But I want to ask some questions, and I want to also follow up on some of their points. What is the reasoning behind implementing the weekly testing? I'm not quite sure anyone really explained the logic. We didn't have weekly testing last year, and there wasn't even a vaccine back then. What's the justification to start it now? Our local positivity, so you guys can see, is 2.15. Everyone else can see? 2.15. That is very low. And that's from the the COVID dashboard that District 25. It's not on the website right now, but that's what we used last year. Northwest Community Hospital has plenty of beds. Remember the two weeks to slow the spread and leave room in the hospitals? We have 37.96% inpatient beds and 41.67 ICU beds. They're probably losing money. I used to work in healthcare. My next question is, was S.H.I.E.L.D. properly vetted by? I don't know who's responsible for that, if it's the administration, if it's presenting it to the board. But new information, and sorry for the sloppiness of this, because some of this information just was released today, but I just want to let you guys know that it's, first of all, it hasn't been rolled out, it doesn't sound like it's been properly staffed, and it also doesn't appear to be a credible vendor at all. As a result of a FOIA FOIA request by Protect Parents Rights, it's a nonprofit group, lots of groups have sprung up, there's going to be lots of lawsuits this year, so just be ready. But bottom line is, they did a FOIA request between S.H.I.E.L.D. and Gift of Hope, which which processes the tests. And Dr. Sam Ho, who is the director of the lab, basically compared the the testing accuracy to flipping a coin and dismisses it, excuse me, dismisses, he dismisses that 50% plus false positives and quarantines for people are harmless. His words direct quote, "At 50% or less PPV, it means the chance of predicting the positivity results to be accurate, for example, as positive, is worse than flipping a coin." He goes on to state, "In other words, we will be telling 95, 96,500 people that they have COVID when, in fact, only 47,500 have it." At the end of the email, he states, "Relatively speaking, it causes less harm to unnecessarily quarantine people for only two weeks when they do not, in fact, have COVID. It is not harmless to misidentify a child as positive 50% or more of the time when it's not accurate. It's not harmless to deny a child's right to their education of the time they happen to have a positive result that isn't accurate about half or more of the time. This is absolutely unacceptable, and should any weekly testing should be questioned at this point, let alone S.H.I.E.L.D.?" Those children that are being put in quarantine, the reviews are not positive so far about the quarantine remote academy.
Thank you, Renee. That was three minutes.
Is my time up?
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate it. Next up, we have Uwe Wotsick. Sorry for that.
Good evening. My name is Eva Vuichig. I have a child at Ivy, and I have another child at Thomas. And tonight, I'd like to tell you about my youngest one. Since the school year started, my first grader, who's been perfectly healthy, has been complaining to me on every single school day about dizziness, headache, and difficulty focusing. When she removes her mask, her dizziness goes away, but the headache stays until the next morning. She's also experiencing irritation and strong mood swings. She's only six years old. Her pediatrician's diagnosis, which I hold in my hand, is, "I believe these symptoms are caused by hypoxia secondary to prolonged nose and mouth covering by facial mask. Yesterday, my daughter felt so dizzy she couldn't go to school. Today, she also stayed home. Maybe it doesn't make any difference to you, but I cannot and I will not ignore it. When I see my child like this, there is no one, no one, who can convince me that a mask is good for her. There are parents who thank you for forcing a mask on my child. They must know what's best for their child. I know what's best for mine. I don't want free lunch. I want my child to be able to breathe. Your attorney was telling us the other day how the school would lose recognition if you don't comply with the executive order. I thought that your job is to protect our children, not follow orders that are being that are being challenged in courts. We all know very well that this situation cannot last, and it will end with or without your help. If you don't do anything now, there will be nothing left for you to feel proud about at the end. You need to stop this nonsense and get back to putting children first. They are the reason you are here. You are abusing my child, and you are taking away my parental rights. This is unacceptable."
Thank you. Next, we have Todd Witherow.
Good evening. Tonight, I implore the board, from what you've heard, to think about the rights related to the recent mandate for all of our teachers, administration, and staff to be forced to be vaccinated or submit to weekly testing. One of my most valued classes I took was Business Ethics with Professor McGowan at Butler University. The framework of the course was to apply ethical considerations to topics that, while you make, may have a personal bias, must be assessed for the greater good of all. It drove myself and other students to realize intellectual curiosity, assess issues from all angles, apply reasoning to decisions in the context of the greater good. The framework is simple. Whenever you're making these decisions, you must consider if it's one, fair, two, just, and three, right. Fair speaks to the question of whether or not the standards have been equally applied in all cases. Oak Park River Forest School District released its COVID dashboard for August 13 through September 9. 82% of all positive cases for the school district were people who were fully vaccinated. 82%. So it's fair to say, is it fair to say that only forcing individuals who are unvaccinated to submit to weekly testing when the science and data is clearly saying that 80% of the cases were unvaccinated individuals? Just refers to the proper application of the law. I'm not a lawyer, so I will not go there. However, I encourage you to have your lawyers review 20 ILCS 2305. Section A says only the Health Department has the ability to enforce a mandate related to public health. Subpart D says that the department may order physical examinations and tests, but only the department may require collection of laboratory specimens as necessary for the diagnosis and treatment of individuals in order to prevent the probable spread of a dangerously contagious or infectious disease. To my non-legal opinion, that is pretty clear that what we are doing right now is not just. Rights, right speaks to the moral correctness. This is the hardest consideration of all to assess and the one that causes the most debate. In terms of this mandate, is it right to force a teacher to receive a vaccine? There's one major consideration that this mandate fails to address. If an individual has natural immunity from COVID, inability to include this consideration goes against science and hundreds of research. The studies were completed by New York University, Washington University, Cleveland Clinic, University of California, University of California, San Francisco, Duke, Cornell, Rockefeller, and on. All of those studies have said that natural immunity to the disease is stronger than the vaccination. So for me, it is hard to defend a position that mandates being that mandates something being right when it ignores science that says natural immunity is better than the vaccine. This year's My Family advocacy remains consistent from what it was in prior year. It's the fundamental right for choice for all of our students, our families, our teachers, our staff, and our administration. With the national teacher shortage, I feared that we would lose teachers because of this mandate, and we're seeing that we can. We cannot continue to force the respected, dedicated teachers away from this profession and away from our district. Given the excellent work by the district to make the vaccine available, there are only a small number of teachers that are impacted by this. But despite the small number of teachers, it does not stop us from standing up for their right to choose and advocating for them as a community. I started a petition on September 3 after my wife spoke at this board. When we learned the loss of a district teacher, I updated the language in the petition. We have over 400 signatures, 400 supporters. Those supporters say that what we're doing is not fair, they say it's not just, and they say it is not right. I'm not asking you to defy the mandate, but I am asking you to apply standards to the teachers that are fair, right, and just for all, and keep our educators here within the district. Thank you.
Next, we have James Melton.
Board members, thank you for hearing my comment. I'm not a employee for District 25. I'm not a parent of District 25. I'm simply a fellow American. I'm here in support of one of the people here tonight. I'll try and keep this brief to say that the way that I serve today in my community is I'm an associate pastor of my church, and I was a former Army soldier. I served in the early portion of the war, and I've seen some pretty horrible things in my time. I've seen terror. I've seen what it does to people. I see what it does to leadership. And so I speak to you as leaders, as a fellow leader. I hear these stories tonight of your community, of the parents, of the teachers, and I can only wonder and think, how must you feel? What is it that's going through your minds? You must be faced with an impossible decision. One group says, "It should be easy. Make it this one." Another says, yet another. And yet, for you, it must be impossible. You make your decisions, and you have to live with them, and I understand this. As leaders, you have to make sacrifice, but we have to keep in mind that sacrifice cannot be mixed with offerings. We cannot offer one side of our people for another. We have to find a way to stay united. As a fellow leader, coming from the experiences that I've had, I can at least share a couple pieces of pieces of advice for you. Number one, the flag. We stood here together, and we sang it together. In 2001, we all understood what we had to do. You sent me and my brothers, and we did what was needed. We pushed back that terror. I know that you must be afraid of the teachers you could lose, of the parents you could lose, of the opportunities in your children that could be lost, and you have to face those hard decisions. And so, as a leader, I can tell you, like we know in the Army, as we know in the military, never leave a man behind. And finally, don't stand on your own wisdom. If anything I have learned, it's this: Lean not on it, but seek the Lord first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for, again, allowing me to speak again. I have two students in the district. So I wanted to speak tonight on a few different things. First, I just wanted to start off by saying that we've heard a lot of talk of, "We're going to do whatever ISB and IDPH tell us to do unequivocally. Doesn't matter, we're going to do it." I really hope that the majority of you don't really have that sort of blindly-follow mentality. I think currently, you're not representing the students of this district, but are instead discriminating against and interrupting their education. And while you're doing that, you're not even requiring the state agencies to prove that their protocols are effective or necessary, or that their policies have more benefit than harm. Have you considered the lack of evidence and data for their decisions? Excuse me. Or the discrimination of students based on vaccination status when determined testing and quarantine? You say you're trusting the experts, but do any of you know who at these agencies is actually making the decisions? Have you researched their qualifications before you trust them? Maybe some of you don't want to follow the guidelines but think you have to. To that, I would say, at a minimum, work to change them so they make any sense at all. Tell the agencies this is wrong, that they're not following data, that they are discriminating against students, that they are breaking the law. And you need to recognize that enforcing these, you are also breaking the law. I am not a lawyer. In my opinion, I believe you are breaking the Nuremberg Code, the Federal Food and Drug Act, and the Illinois Right of Conscience Act, among others. So which laws do you want to follow? These laws or executive orders parading as laws? JCAR has called out ISB for wielding power they don't truly have. It's time our district stands up too. Lawsuits have already been won throughout Illinois against districts that are enforcing these mandates. It's only a matter of time before parent groups here replicate those suits to protect their children. A recent 2020 decision held that the Conscience Act supersedes the Tort Immunity Act. Therefore, you're taking a chance that you won't be protected from liability, as the more specific and recent statute, which is the Conscience Act, takes precedence. So I urge you to voluntarily stop the mask, vaccine, testing, and quarantine mandates at District 25 schools. They are illogical, unethical, unlawful, and anti-science. Even our own district data has shown these measures to be ineffective and unnecessary at best, while clearly harmful. I call for an official review of protocols that is focused on unequal treatment of students, along with forced use of experimental medical devices and the lack of evidence-based reasoning to support such measures. Anything short of this is continuing to act in a manner that is both discriminatory and unlawful toward the students of District 25. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Kopaz.
Thank you. I wanted to speak in support of teachers that have spoken earlier today, and I really didn't know what was actually going to transpire. So this is yet another tragedy that's beholden to our community, we're losing great teachers, and for what? For some mandates that are made up. I'm curious if anybody actually has read the actual approval letters from the FDA. I'm not sure if anybody just believes what you have heard on TV or not, but in case you have not read the letters, there are actually two letters. One to the Pfizer and one to the Biontech. The Pfizer vaccine that's been administered since last December has been granted extension of emergency utilization. It's not approved. The approval for the vaccine has been given to Biontech, Corbin ADI, I believe it's its name, but guess what? It's not available. So mandating somebody to take the vaccine that is under, that is only available under EUA, that's unlawful. So I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but you can, I'm sure you can have lawyers look at this, but mandating somebody to take the vaccine that is, that is under EUA, that's, I think that's against the EUA code, actually. I think it's in EUA states that you have to give an option to opt out. You cannot force somebody to take the vaccine, and you cannot make it as a, as a, as a part of being employed or et cetera. So this is, this is, this is completely wrong, what's happening. So I'm here to support all those teachers. I had no idea what's going to happen, so I really made that up on the fly. This I actually had prepared because I wanted to make sure that anybody who actually have not read those, two, there were actually two letters, again, not just one. So people say that Pfizer vaccine was approved? It was not. It was given an extension of EUA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Stacy Pacilio.
Hi, my name is Stacy Pacilio. We just moved our children to Westgate Elementary from Catholic school, so we are brand-new to public school and the system in general. I'm only so much in the know, but I did want to come here tonight to get a gist of the process and empower you if I could. I really don't want my time tonight to be used reading adverse effects from masks and this particular vaccine, as I assumed that would be provided tonight by another speaker or will be provided in a separate email by me. I wanted I wanted to just speak to you all tonight and empower you all to first reconsider the mask mandate in school. There was a time you all felt that instinct to vote mask optional. I understand end of summer, initially following the governor's mask mandate, but we all have a spirit, that instinct, that speaks to us and keeps us on the right path, and you all need to pause and listen to your own intuition again. This board represents all of the children in this District 25, and the voice of all the parents. So many people are depending on you right now, and you will not make everyone happy. That we all know. I get how you all feel for the immunocompromised children. I'm immunocompromised myself, high-risk, and frankly, I've spent half my life feeling like no one cares. So let me tell you, I think it is amazing that we all care now, at least as it pertains to COVID. My kids don't suffer greatly from the mask, but they do suffer, like me, with trying new things and finding their voice when uncomfortable. So my question to you today is, do you think it is fair to compromise all of the children? The children that weren't born this way, the children who are not afraid? You run the risk of physically and emotionally compromising children that are not compromised yet, instilling fear of this virus, and getting too close to people, and leaving their car or house without a mask, and fully speaking, breathing, or showing affection? There are children not in the know of the nitty-gritty of politics and pandemics and mask-vaccine debates. The immunocompromised children or families afraid of this virus can opt to wear a mask, and they won't be alone anymore, and they may even have buddies wearing masks too and not have to feel different. But for the children and the families that want to be free, they deserve to be free too. The compromise is mask optional. Otherwise, we would be asking for no masks. The only way to not have any child doing something they are uncomfortable doing, or any family doing something to their child they are uncomfortable doing, is by honoring choice. I want to tell you all what someone once told me, and I'm sorry if I'm nearing my time, but I am new. Never in my life have I finished a conversation in three minutes, and that's about the biggest challenge I have here tonight. But someone once said to me during a hard, challenging time decision, "If you were your mother, what would you say to yourself?" I would say to you all that it took some serious motivation and drive to run for school board, and you should be proud of yourselves. I would say to you all that you really picked a heck of a time to run, so God bless. I would also say to you all that what I find myself saying to my kids, and even hanging on to for dear life sometimes myself, in this book right here, titled "Right Now, I Am Brave." You all need to be brave. Your job here is not, or at least shouldn't be, dangerous. You can do this, be courageous. Your minds may start to play tricks on you all, and tell you all kinds of fibs and scares, but you must begin to have positive conversations with yourselves and tell yourselves what I just told you. You are brave, you can do this, and be courageous. You need to begin to blaze this trail. So many parents will support you, other districts will follow your lead, I promise you. And then I would give you a big hug and say good luck. More will be coming your way with this vaccination. The compromise is choice on all issues for all, and we need to reconsider it now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stacy. You were close, that was about 3 minutes and 45 seconds, so that was... So we've exceeded the half hour for public comment. I know Dr. Byrne has some submitted online, so we can...
Yeah, again, we will post those. There are many comments that have been submitted online. Oh, that's okay, and we have another one, but the ones that have been submitted online will be posted on our website.
All right, this is our final public comment. Amanda Madsen.
I'm gonna give my time to Renee to finish.
Yeah, we...
Thanks, Amanda. So where I ended up cutting off is I just wanted to point out a couple of quick things. One is... Thank you. According to this graph from CDC, you can see the trends are all very similar except for a couple of unusual spikes, but basically, the trends across all these states that surround us, Iowa, Indiana, Wisconsin, a little bit of Michigan, I included that as well, every single state around us does not have a mandate, a state mandate, and many, many schools are not mandating masks. Only the big urban areas, that's it. And their trends are not much different than ours. The other thing that I wanted to point out is managing exclusions. As you can see, that we got from last year was 3,800 exclusions total from contact tracing, yielded only five positive results. This isn't doing anything. This isn't changing anything. If your kid is sick, keep them home. So far, on the COVID dashboard, you can see we've only got five students excluded. This, to me, tells me that that 2.15 positivity rate shows us that we have low transmission locally. We need to be looking at our numbers. Our local numbers are important. That is the reason why we should be making local choices, not sweeping state choices. That's it. Thank you.
Moving on, it's our consent agenda, and this is an action item, so I need a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Anisha.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, personnel report, an addendum to the personnel report. B, treasurer's report. C, invoices. D, fixed asset disposal report. E, committee of the whole meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2021. F, regular and closed session meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2021.
Thank you, Anisha. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions, comments, or concerns on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. Lana, if you could recall the roll, please.
Member Scott Polato?
Yes.
Member Olenichak?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philipack?
Yes.
Member Serniglia?
Yes.
Member Faso?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and before we move on, Dr. K, would you like to approach?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the time to welcome and introduce a new administrator. When you voted yes just now to approve the consent agenda, you also voted to approve our new part-time administrator, the new assistant principal at Dryden Elementary School. Before we clap, let me say her name first, so welcome. This is Kara Giacomans Ferris. Welcome to Dryden School.
I have the official.
Typically, we provide a gift bag. It was already provided earlier today, but I reserved one item, the official name tag, so congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome to 25. Okay, moving on, communications to and from board members, and we'll start with NSSEO, Gina Faso.
I actually don't have an update. The next meeting is not until next week, and I believe, Scott, you will be attending in my place.
Yes, that's my inaugural meeting for our partnership for NSSEO. I know that just in passing, the building over at Timber Ridge is going quite well, probably faster than Kensington Road is getting fixed, so that's good. I'm excited to be a part of this. Thanks. We move on to IASB, Anisha.
Yeah, thank you, President Scott Philipack. Yesterday, Brian and I, and Dr. Byrne, we attended the IASB Fall Dinner, and it was great. Dr. Courtney Orzal, who is the Associate Director for Professional Development for the Illinois Association of School Administrators, gave a really engaging keynote talk, and she talked about telling your district story while building a strong community through effective board and superintendent relationships. It was helpful. She also recommended a book called "The Trust Edge," and IASB actually had a winter book club on it, and I recommend that book too. Some of us went through that book club conversation, and also talking about leading with our why. So helpful conversation, great kind of professional development yesterday for the board.
I'll just add to that, at that meeting that happens twice a year, the Illinois Association of School Boards does recognize board members from throughout the region area who achieve different levels of professional development and involvement, and we were fortunate to have District 25 representative in that, acknowledged yesterday, Anisha, for receiving Level 2 of her master board member status, so congratulations.
Excellent. Move on to Ed Redd with Rich and Stacy. Rich, we'll start with you.
There, I have no comment at this time or nothing to add. We have our luncheon, inaugural year luncheon tomorrow afternoon, so we'll see what comes up there.
Sounds good. Stacy. All right, good. Moving on, board governance framework, and this month, or actually, second time this month, I'll pick, the board takes responsibility for itself. I know in October, coming up in between our meetings, we're gonna be doing some board development, so this is timely in that, that the board will schedule an annual workshop to complete a board self-evaluation and review government's team agreements and processes. And I think that's timely, that we revisit that and kind of self-examine and see where we're at as a board and how we can be better. So that's coming up in early October, so I think we all have the date in our calendars, and if not, we'll schedule that so everybody's there, and it'll be a meaningful experience. Moving on to other board communication, and this is new for this month, and this is just kind of anything out there that we want to kind of share with the board.
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg.
First, thanks for this opportunity. It's great to share some great stuff happening in our community, and I wanted to highlight two things. One, out in the wild, out living in the district, I came across two of the "out and about" videos. One was in the District 25 dish, the 9/11 reflections, and then popping up in my Twitter feed, I had the "thank you" to Mr. Ray, and those are just great windows into our schools, and the way they highlight the kids, and the way they spoke, just so abusive about the topics that were on, especially the Mr. Ray one, was really heartwarming. So I just, you know, there's so many challenges we're dealing with right now, and those bits of sunshine are so welcome, and hats off to our producer of the... So, yeah, thank you. Yep, thanks, man. The other one I wanted to bring up today was the board coffee. We just had our first one on September 11th, and I'll speak for you, Anisha, if I could. We're grateful to the community members that came out for that event, and it really is, for me, as a new board member, really welcomed this opportunity. It was a relaxed session, we had a constructive dialogue, and it wasn't just between us as board members, and Dr. Byrne was there, but also between community members, which was great to see, and it was more personal, more interactive. So I'll just use this moment to highlight the ones that are coming up, December 11th at Windsor, March 12th at Patton, and June 11th at Westgate. So please come out, and just so you know, that there are two board members at every one of those sessions, and then Dr. Byrne as well.
Yeah, Mr. President, I will... Ditto, Greg, thank you for saying that, and the coffee was really good as well, so it was great to talk to everybody. I also want to mention two things in the community that can add to our District 25 and to add to our students, the opportunities that our students have, and one of them is the Arlington Heights Memorial Library had their Makerspace launch, and just great STEM opportunity for all our students, so that was great to attend. And also, as we feed into District 214, the foundation had a fundraiser, and the Gulf Foundation opened, and they raised about $30,000 for students and for our District 214 students as well. So as a community, just amazing things happening, and it was good to attend both of those.
Thank you, Anisha. Thank you, Greg. Anything further? Just on a, keep an eye out for "Where's Dr. Byrne?", we'd like to play. Tuesday morning, I was dropping off my son at CAP early in the morning, well before she was supposed to be at work here at the district office. Dr. Byrne was helping out with CAP as the children's at play with the Park District before-and-after-school program. It turns out, they are finding some shortage in staff, and Dr. Byrne was gracious enough to help out where needed, at Patton and wherever other school is needed, which brings us to a point that if you have anybody in the audience, or board members here have any teenage kids that are looking for before-and-after-school job opportunities, that is a fantastic way to get experience, just for job experience, or future teachers, that's a great way to get your, build your resume, and it's also good for the district in that our kids are safe before and after school, a safe place for our kids to go, that's supervised by the Park District and the schools that they attend. So thank you first to Dr. Byrne, and secondly, a plug for CAP, if you can staff them, help them out, because they're needing staff.
Do they have to be vaccinated?
That's something you can discuss with the Park District, application. I do have a trunkload of slime in the back that you were playing with, with the kids, so that's something there. Anything else? Next, we are going to communication to board members. First, we start out with PTA, Nicole Barbieri.
She does not have a report tonight.
All right. Next, ABC 25 Foundation, Gina Faso.
So yes, for teachers and families, anyone who has not decided to participate or is not remembered to participate, the ABC 25 Foundation raises money to fund great ideas that are new and innovative for our students and the teachers, and principals and staff and administrators are generally the writers of these grants. So if you didn't join and you have an interest, that would be great. We are also seeking volunteers. We would love to have you join and help us out with being able to look at these grants and participate in our big fundraiser, which occurs in April, is our race. And then last but not least, our grant writing is currently open for our teachers, staff, and administrators, and it will remain open until October 15th, and we are looking forward to all of the new and exciting ideas that come in every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Next, ATA, Alison Berg.
I have a little slideshow tonight, so not everybody has to look at me. Good evening. I wanted to start by saying thank you to Rich Olnichak and Brian Serniglia, Brian K. and Stacy Malik for once again coming to the table to negotiate this year. ATA is grateful for your willingness to discuss the issues that impact our teachers. There was good dialogue on all sides, and we're pleased to have come to an agreement once again. I am sure that we will continue to meet in the near future to discuss more topics as the pandemic and the mandates continue to change and have an impact on our schools and working conditions. I feel hopeful that we'll continue to have positive and productive conversations in the future. I also, I envisioned all the new teachers still being here for this next part, and I'm sure they're all watching at home. I wanted to give a shout-out of congratulations to all the teachers who made tenure this evening. It's a huge accomplishment, in my opinion. This is my 25th year. Being a teacher is the greatest job in the world, and one of the most important ones. It's the only job I know where you get to help shape the minds of our future, provide inspiration for the next generation, and you even sometimes get to play kickball once in a while, too. We are proud to have all of those new teachers who are tenure tonight as part of our District 25 family. Finally, tonight, I wanted to shine a spotlight on Windsor, the school that I have called home for the past 22 years. The last time I was here... Is the slideshow running? Awesome. The last time I was here, I mentioned that second grade was able to go to the Arlington Heights Memorial Library on a walking field trip, so I'm bringing it up again because this time I have pictures to prove it. They learned about all the wonderful resources the library has to offer and had a great time going on a field trip. Feels almost normal. Students in our building in grades 1 through 5 have been participating in WIN TIME, which stands for "What I Need." All students have been engaged in activities that they need to succeed. Fifth grade has been working hard on a "Give Me Five" strategy, which is used for reinforcing school expectations. Students in our instructional programs have been working with hands-on manipulatives to encourage fine motor, problem-solving, and collaborative skills. They've also been working on DEER TIME, which actually stops for "Drop Everything and Research", and they've been utilizing their Chromebooks as a research tool. Kindergarten friends practice working with words with Play-Doh. They also participated in STEM activities. Intervention groups are up and running, where students get an extra boost of reading or math support, which has been so important for student success and student confidence. We have a brand-new guitar club at Windsor this year, which is pretty cool. In art class, students have been working on a collaborative mural and thought about what art means to them with an all-school bulletin board. We had ruler training for parents take place at Windsor School. And finally, this month has not been without challenges as well, and we continue as a district... without challenges as well. And we continue, as a district, to face a sub-s shortage. So hats off to all the teachers in our building that have helped out when we were in a bind. I can't tell you how many teachers on a whim have picked up to take a class and to pitch in where hands have been needed, just as we talked about, Dr. Bine pitching in. We all are doing the same thing in our building. We had a fair number of students visiting the quarantine classroom, which is new to all of us this year. And I've actually gotten some really nice feedback from the parents, that the students are really engaged, and it's been working out well. And the transition between home and the quarantine classroom and the in-class classroom has been seamless. And kudos to those quarantine teachers for providing instruction online so that none of our students miss a beat. Finally, a shout out to all our Windsor nurses and administrators that have been working tirelessly managing COVID in our building. Thank you to the Board for providing me the time to update all of you with all the amazing things going on at Windsor this month. And I look forward to presenting next month on the next school. Thanks.
Thank you. Just be careful with the guitar club, because they're going to change DEAR to Drop Everything and Rock. Next, we move on to our Student Services. And Dr. Peg.
And actually, Dr. Les Wiki had to be elsewhere tonight, so I will be sharing her report. This is an action item. I don't know if you want to do the motion first.
Yeah, I think the motion first would be good.
Mr. President.
Aneeshah.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve adding the Special Olympics co... Sorry, I'm on the right word. Special Olympics Coach Stipends as submitted to the 2021-2022 budget.
Yeah, thank you, Aneeshah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
So as, as the Board knows, we've been doing some research on working with Special Olympics. And Dr. Les Wiki has done extensive work to bring to you tonight. So a recommendation to support a traditional team model, where athletes ages eight and above can participate on a school district team. A traditional team model is how, what Special Olympics recommends that we start with. You all know that we've also had an interest in the unified model. We have some similar unified program approaches of our own, not with Special Olympics, but for students with abilities and disabilities to work together. But as we transition to working with Special Olympics, they do suggest that we start with a traditional model first. Each team would have a head coach and auxiliary coaches. With Special Olympics requirement that we have a one-to-four coach-to-student ratio. It is based on that that we bring you the number of coach positions and stipend tonight. Again, it is recommended that we start this spring with a track and field team. And then as we move into the next school year, that we add a fall-winter basketball team and continue that spring track and field team. Special Olympics does require that all teams have a minimum of eight weeks of practice totaling eight hours in order to participate in the track and field, and then eight hours to participate in basketball. We did send a survey out to the district asking if we offered a Special Olympics team, if people thought there'd be interest to participate, if families could provide transportation, and if families or others would volunteer to help support a District 25 Special Olympics team. We had 55 respondents to that survey, with 19 of those families saying they would have a child who would participate, 17 of those 19 participants indicating that they could transport their child, and 14 of those indicating they would volunteer to support a Special Olympics team. Additionally, we heard from 18 families said that they would volunteer to support a Special Olympics team, even if they did not have a child who would participate. We actually estimate that that number would grow, with about 3,500 families in the district, that we could see growth. So we're asking for approval to support at least 40 students at this time, so that we can have that traditional Special Olympics team with the ultimate goal of transitioning to a Special Olympics Unified Champion School Team in the future. And so we utilized the known District 25 stipends, and that's how we determine the Special Olympics stipends and what we're recommending to tonight. And of course, we would fill those as the number of students, you know, expanded. So if we started with 20 students, we'd have the number of stipends to support that one-to-four ratio. But we're asking to be able to grow that should we see the number of students that we expect. Stacy, is there anything that I forgot that I should add? Are there any questions?
Mr. President. Laurie, just a quick question, because you did reference that unified Special Olympics. You know, and I'm just thinking back to earlier this evening, we had the session on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And though they, though I think you, I heard you say they recommended we do the normal first and then unified, if that's what I heard correctly. You know, based on the discussion earlier, wouldn't we just go, we understand what they're recommending, wouldn't it be better just to go with a unified first? Or is there some other logic that might prevail in that?
So as you know, we have something that would be similar to a Special Olympics Unified Program at the middle school level. But the Special Olympics organization strongly recommends that we begin with a traditional program. And in fact, would, if we were, once we go to a unified program, they require that we have a middle school unified before we start an elementary, so that you don't start an elementary unified, and then they have nowhere to go to. Where a traditional program would be kind of a district-wide for students eight years old and up. So that is their strong recommendation, that we begin with the traditional program of athletics and then transition that in the future.
Mr. President, first, Dr. Bine, just thankful to Dr. Les Wiki for bringing this forward to us. And just two quick questions. Who can be a coach? Can it community members? Is it only certified staff?
Yeah, thank you. Good question. So there would be, we would need a head coach. There is a lot of coordination, working with the Special Olympics organization. So you see that stipend included here. That person would work on behalf of District 25. That is stipend in our agreement with our Teachers Association and would be offered to members there first. But otherwise, other adults can be coaches, so volunteers could fill coaching positions and therefore possibly not utilize all the stipends that we have available. But we do want to make sure that we do have all the number of adults that we would need so that all children who wish to could participate.
Okay. And then just my last question is, if someone's listening to this and excited about it, what's the best way for them to reach out if they want to be a volunteer?
Yeah, thank you. So once we place our Special Olympics head coach, that person will coordinate and put out all the information on how to get involved. And then we'll be doing, you know, all the applications on people who want to coach, and then helping create a schedule and a time and a place. And that person will communicate all those details.
Thank you. Hearing no more questions or comments, let's take this to a vote. Lana, call roll, please.
Member Faso?
Yes.
Member Serniglia?
Yes.
Member Philip Pack?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Olonichak?
Yes.
Member Scapolato?
Yes.
All right. The motion passes six to zero. Awesome. Business and Finance, we go to 2021-22 budget, and this is an action item, so I need a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian.
I recommend the Board of Education adopt the 2021-2022 budget as presented.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Stacy Malik, take it away.
So as you're aware, the tentative budget was presented at the August Board Meeting and has been available for public viewing on our website for over the last 30 days. There are a couple of changes from that budget to what I'm sharing with you tonight. On the revenue side, we have changes really just in grant revenues, some of, some new allocations in grant revenues, or where the state has finalized our numbers for additional revenues totaling $795,000. And then on the expense side, finalizing our salary and benefits budget based on actual staffing as of probably eight days ago, as well as the benefit choices all the staff made for this year, reflected on our most recent payroll. We did add some lunch stipends at the middle schools to support supervision for social distancing. We made a couple of reallocation of some grant dollars. We made a slight change in our site increase in our budget to replace the equipment in our STEM labs at both middle schools, as well as our communication media arts labs and our digital arts and design labs. I did make the decision to add some contingency money for COVID expenditures. We do continue to rent mobile units outside many of our schools to continue to store some of the furniture, to allow for maximizing our social distancing at the schools. And we are continuing to have to buy some PPE in various formats. So those dollars would only be spent to the extent that we would need to continue some mitigating factors related to COVID. And then the, one other big increase, we've had some increases in our special ed out of district students, as well as the possibility of some residential placement. So I did add additional funds to the budget to support those students. But overall, the increase in the expenditure budget is just under $136,000. Other than these changes, everything in the budget is what you saw last month.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions, comments, concerns that...
Mr. President?
Yes, Rich.
I do have some questions. And I know, Laurie, you had answered some of the questions ahead of time, but there are some that are still outstanding. First off, Stacy, we're about, whether it's Stacy or Laurie, I think we're $4 million over budget or into the deficit. Or what is the current count roughly?
Actually, I believe it's, the deficit, as I discussed last month, is due to our continuing to pay for our large capital projects out of our operating funds. So if you look at the summary, that's in the budget booklet attached to, let's, let me find the page for you. Page nine in the final budget booklet in the agenda item. The total deficit is $3.59 million. And if you refer to what we're spending in capital projects, it's $3.9 million. So actually, if we took out and didn't pay for capital projects, we have actually a balanced budget with a slight surplus.
So again, looking at some of those numbers, then, within the budget, we're spending about $1.4 million on technology. And in your response to the question, you focused in on the various line items, which totaled 2.3, but discounting all the salary stuff, things of that nature. It comes really down to three line items. $400,000 for non-consumable supplies, about $300,000 for software, $400,000 for technology. Can you give me a highlight of what is some of that spending on?
Sure. Software would be the variety of software programs used throughout the district, some by students, some to run our operating systems. I'm just trying to pull this up.
So that's just, you're lumping everything into software. It's the software licensing fees for the software that we use? It's not like, or is that a hard purchasing?
No, that's software, software licensing.
Licensing fees, okay. And then the equipment, just roughly, is it?
Equipment would be anything that has a cost over $500 and a useful life over one year. So laptops, large printers.
Right, but in that $400,000, are we, as an example, is it just the normal, if printers, I'm sorry, if laptops have a lifespan of three years, it's the normal?
Yes, it's all, it's all our replacement cycle.
Every year, you're doing a third or whatever number, that type of thing?
Correct. As well as we replace servers as needed. It's all replacement cycle equipment.
There's no special fund. So really, from a...
There's no additional money.
There's no, so really, all things being equal, our spend for technology should be relatively that amount, you know, barring one-time items and that type of thing.
It's always that amount. It actually was reduced. It used to be 1.5 million, but about six years ago, we made 9% budget reductions throughout the departments. So the tech budget is always the 1.357 million. Anytime we would go, need to buy equipment above that, as indicated, like this year, we did the CMA labs, that was above and beyond what we could typically support. And just as a reminder for the Board, you do, you see all those expenses through the invoice report. And anytime if we were going to add a program, for example, that had a large cost for technology, that would be a program brought to the Board ahead of time.
Sorry, going on and looking at this, again, you know, looking, trying to understand our budget and, you know, referencing, you know, I know Aneeshah would be very proud. So I did bring our ISBA's most recent journal, and there's a great discussion on money talks and three core principles. It talks about budgeting, key list in here, talks about making sure that we have a priority-based budgeting that we're very quick to add, generally, in general. Budgets are very quick to add, meaning more dollars, versus take dollars out, and then the importance of communicating a particular plan. So I thought it was a great article. But one of the things that the article did talk about, and again, a question that was asked earlier, is, so when we look at our major expenses of salary, what is our major, what, in terms of the priorities, how much are we equating toward the priority, and what are those priorities? Maybe in the top three categories, or where are we spending the most dollars in?
Well, I think the Board, as I always publicize, the Board has always said the number one goal is to maintain low class sizes. So that's always been our number one priority, is to be able to fund enough teachers to make sure we maintain our class sizes to the extent the Board has given us those guidelines. As we bring the personnel report that we build throughout the spring and bring that to the Board every late spring, or April, May, maybe, to the Board for approval, that's where we would highlight any changes. Sometimes there are decreases in staffing there. Sometimes there are increases. In the most recent one, we had to increase some of our special education staffing by, I think, three and a half FTE because of the needs of students. So that's a process we go through every year in terms of looking at our staffing and where the needs are. We also added interventionists because that was identified as a need to assist our students who need additional support outside of the regular classroom.
Okay. So just by going off that preference, so since 2018, our staff levels have gone down, you know, about 175 students, yet our staff levels have remained relatively constant. So under, based on what you're saying, if we're trying to equate the staff sizes or room sizes, right, student sizes, we should have decreased by about nine teachers from that standpoint.
Uh, well...
Not even more, right? So I guess the question is then, you know, again, I'm not arguing that we haven't reduced or anything like that. I'm just trying to understand, then if we're saying then that was a major priority, what filled in its spot so that...
I can jump in, Stacy. So again, those, that decrease in students is across nine schools, right, and the however many classrooms in each school. So it may not lower a class, you know, a specific class size enough to go down a teacher. But we definitely do look at those needs by building and staff each year based on that. And then the other things that may not equate directly to enrollment are student needs. Like Stacy said, we increased interventionists. We increased social workers last year. We increased special educators or teacher assistants or support staff, speech-language pathologists, et cetera, based on what our student needs are.
or support staff, speech language pathologists, et cetera, based on what our student needs are that year. So it doesn't always have a direct equation to enrollment, although there is, as you referenced, a very detailed process Dr. K goes through every, probably starting January, if not earlier, until he comes to the personnel report and does bring to as a part of that personnel report both the reduction in positions and the addition in positions.
Sorry, then, you know, again, going through that particular exercise, if we were to say, you know, let's reduce the budget by 5%, where would we look to make those less investments? Or what's, what are the programs that are lower on the priority that we should be questioning? Again, if we're looking at all our budgets and everything, and you know, our budgets tend to always go up every year. If we were to say, let's stay flat, right, not take the CPI, or let's just be flat or even reduce to create a cushion, where would that potential savings be?
Yeah, and if the, if the board were to direct us to do that, we would, of course, our priority would be to not impact the classroom. So stay as far away from an impact on students as we could. So that would be our, you know, the administrative team would get together and look at all the things that we currently have in the budget that we do believe are, of course, very important to keeping our school district running as well as it does. But if that was a directive, we would be looking to, as we have in the past, make reductions that would have the least impact on students and instruction.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Take this to a vote. Lana, call the roll, please.
Member Olonechak?
No.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Serniglia?
Yes.
Member Fossil?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
All right, motion passes five one. Moving on to administrative compensation report, Public Act 96, 434.
This is just an information item. There is legislation out there that requires that by October 1st, we post this report on the district website after having presented it to the board at a public meeting. We do this every year.
Sounds good. Any comments on this? All right. Moving on to administrator and teacher salary and benefit reports, 2021.
This was a different piece of legislation that required that we post the same information that was in the previous report and then some without eliminating the previous report. So it has some duplicate information in it, but this includes all certified staff. This is actually data summarized from last year. And this is data that is submitted between our personnel department and our payroll department to the state. And again, we are required to post it on our website by October 1st, after having presented it to the board at a public meeting.
Looks good. Any questions, comments, concerns on this one? It's just a longer document. All right, thank you, Stacy. No facilities today, personnel and planning. So this is our MOU that the ATA referenced. This is Dr. K. You ready to go? Yes, as an action, you want to do a motion first?
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian?
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding from September 23rd, 2021 as presented.
Thank you, Brian. A second?
Second.
Oh, it's Greg. He has his mic on. All right, Brian and Greg, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share the proposed memorandum of understanding between the Board of Ed and the ATA. This memorandum memorializes the agreements reached by both parties on the items discussed. The goal of the memorandum is to clarify the impact and the working conditions for our ATA members. In some cases, where the current professional agreement is silent or otherwise does not have any language, this memorandum of understanding provides clarity on these topics and serves as the agreement between the board and the ATA on these silent topics within the professional agreement. On August 12th, I was here presenting the MOU to begin the school year. The reason I am returning this evening is to highlight the updated aspects as a result of the governor's mandate to require school personnel to receive the vaccine or comply with weekly COVID-19 testing. These agreements were bargains, were bargained through the collective process between the representatives serving the ATA and the representatives serving the board. I'd like to thank the participants who helped negotiate this agreement, including Allison Berg, Casey Whitaker, J.J. Pearl, Kate Reno, Brian Serniglia, Rich Olonechek, Stacy Malik, and myself. There are three items that we bargained, and I would like to add to the updated MOU. Starting with number six, COVID testing. In compliance with the governor's executive order on August 26th, beginning September 19th, members of the bargaining unit who are not fully vaccinated must be tested weekly by Friday. In the event the requirements of the executive order change, adjustments to this requirement will be made to remain in full compliance. If employee testing is done at the district office or district sites, the testing will be at no cost to the employee. If the employee elects to test outside the district, the testing will be at the employee's expense. Number seven, failure, failure to test or vaccinate. Any bargaining unit member who fails to vaccinate or test as required by the governor's August 21st executive order will be subject to progressive discipline. The first failure to vaccinate or test will result in a one-day suspension without pay and an unpaid leave until proof of vaccination or testing is provided. Continued failure to vaccinate or test will result in up to five-day suspension without pay and an unpaid leave until proof of vaccination or testing is provided. Thereafter, if the employee continues to be unvaccinated or untested, the employee will be subject to further discipline, including dismissal pursuant to the requirements of the law. And the last one, number eight, the sick leave bank. Any teacher who tests positive for COVID-19 by district or an authorized testing facility will be allowed to access the ATA sick leave bank for the period of quarantine not to exceed five aggregate workdays prior to using their own unused accumulated sick leave. This limited use of the ATA sick leave bank will only apply during the 21, 22 school year and is available only once the circumstances noted below. Any need for further absence beyond the aggregate five days will be covered by the teacher's unused accumulated sick leave, if any. Otherwise, the teacher will be placed upon unpaid leave for required quarantine beyond the 10 aggregate days. So entitlement to this use of the benefit is retroactive all the way back to the first day of the school year, August 16th, or a teacher's date of initial vaccination, whichever is later. The five days of the sick leave bank use noted above will be available to teachers in any of the following categories. Teachers who are fully vaccinated, who test positive for COVID-19. Teachers unable to be vaccinated due to verifiable religious or medical reasons and who test positive for COVID-19. Or any vaccinated teacher whose child residing in the immediate household is required to quarantine. In this instance, the teacher must present verifiable proof of the child's need to quarantine. Those are the three items we bargained as a result of the mandate. I want to once again thank the ATA and the representatives of the board for their collective efforts. Tonight, I am asking that the board take action on the memo of understanding. At this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding as written between the Arlington Teachers Association and the Board of Education dated September 23rd, 2021. Are there any questions?
This is just for the board.
Mr. President? I just want to go out and thank, you know, Stacy and Brian and the ATA. Where'd Allison go? So Kate, Kate, you there? All right, so, but really to commend the ATA Executive Board, Allison, Kate, Casey, and JJ for the work in this effort. Like all things, you go into a discussion not knowing the outcome. And I think maybe Brian would attest to very cordial, good food, that probably helps a lot. But over the, over the several days that we met to come up to an agreement that really is more unique, but meets all parties in what we're trying to attain for the district.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing none. This is a motion, so call the roll, please, Lana.
Member Patel?
Yes.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Serniglia?
Yes.
Member Fossil?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Olonechek?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. Moving on to our superintendent report. This is the strategic plan update.
Thank you. So as the board knows, we'll be coming to you monthly to give you updates on the strategic plan action teams and the work that they're doing. Approximately 75 people are participating on the five goal action teams that we have. These include parents, employees, board members, and community members. Just a general update this time, the whole group met once via Zoom to review a state of the district. Similar to the data that was presented, for those of you that were on the original strategic plan team, presentations were given by our four assistant superintendents. Those presentations covered the current data available for personnel and planning, business, finance operations, student services, and student learning. And then our participants met in person on September 13th in their separate goal action teams. At this meeting, each group reviewed the strategic plan and discussed our interests in participating, as well as agreed to some group norms. We began our brainstorming of objectives for each of the specific goals. And this list will be continued and prioritized at our next meeting in October. And also at the next couple of meetings, as we try to prioritize the objectives that our community members would like to see us accomplish under the strategic plan, each group will also work to determine how success would be measured for each item. So we'll begin to, in October, report to the board by action team, so by goal, on that specific action team's work and the progress towards that goal established through that strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Biden. Any comments, questions?
I just wanted to comment, it's been just so great being part of this process as a board member. And I'm so impressed with the number of parents who volunteered to be on these teams and the engaging conversations. I was in a group with Dr. K and the facilitation level of our administrators of the strategic plan. It was just really well, it's being really well executed and really impressive as a whole community effort, really showing that we are, you know, a public school taking in the perspectives of our community. Thank you to the whole team.
Anything else? All right, moving on to our second reading of policy. This is a continuation from last month, which is an action item. I believe we just changed some terminology in one of the policies that was presented. This is an action item, so I need a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg?
I move that the Board of Education approve Policy 6:160 as presented.
Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second? Thank you, Gina. Dr. Biden?
Yeah, I'll just add, you're correct. We've just changed the title and gone from English learners to multilingual learners. Our director of multilingual learners in the district did confirm that she is confident that this wording does align with where the state has been moving. We have seen over the last couple of years, this phrasing to represent our multilingual learners' change very often and then change back. So we were a little hesitant, but she was confident that this is the right representation for us to use. IASB and their press policy has not moved to that language yet, but this does align with where we have been updating our information as well as where the State Board of Education is. And so we bring this to you with that change in terminology. And just so the board knows, there was a second policy I know that you asked us to review. We're not quite ready to bring that back to you, but should in the near future.
Sounds good. It seems like a pretty straightforward change, but any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? All right, hearing none. Lana, please call the roll.
Member Philipek?
Yes.
Member Serniglia?
Yes.
Member Fossil?
Yes.
Member Scapalato?
Yes.
Member Olonechek?
Yes.
Member Patel?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to zero. Moving on, we're going to go back to public input, community input. So this is our second community input. I see a blue sheet coming my way. We'll go to Sarah Knott.
Hi, everyone. So my dad is Greg Lundie. He just walked out after you guys made that unanimous decision about this thing that Brian is rolling out. I'm here to talk about bullying, okay? Bullying happens when there is a bully, when there is someone that gets bullied, and when there are bystanders. Bystanders. You all are being bystanders right now. We come from a loving, kind family, but my dad is not wanting to take this vaccine. We know there's a big elephant in the room. Everyone supported him. And the board isn't standing up for anyone. How do you guys not stand up for someone who was educator of the year, four years ago, who loves his students? He does everything for them. Put the science aside, I've studied this for five years plus, so I, I know stuff, people know stuff. There are lots of educated people here. You guys can see that. But the only way bullying stops is you go tell a teacher. Does that actually work? I don't know. Sometimes. We're coming to you. We're coming to you. You guys are like our teachers here. Are you guys doing anything? No, you know what? One of my brothers got bullied when he was younger, and you know how it stopped? It took people locking arms. It took the quarterback of the football team saying, hey, knock it off, stop doing that, and locking arms with people. You guys, Greg, Rich, Anisha, Scott, Brian, Gina, Stacy, you guys can be that team that stops this injustice. It's not fair what's going on. And if you guys think differently, you guys aren't thinking about your kids long-term, about there's going to be a vaccinated and unvaccinated water fountain or school buses. They're talking about this in the NBA, what's going on. That's where it's going. It's going to our kids. And, you know, if you don't see that, if you think it's just a little testing here, if you don't see my dad had COVID, talk to any doctors who know anything, any immunologists, they'll say, hey, that's better than anything else. But yet, no one is taking a stand. Everyone voted with this motion that, that doesn't make sense. You're losing good teachers, and you're going to lose good students, parents. I'm not sending my kids to public schools because of this stuff. And so you guys are losing really good teachers that care for their kids. You guys are losing very good students, and this is not just. And you guys, I know you guys care about my dad. I know it. I know he's talked to you guys. And it's just disheartening. He puts up a poster every year in his classroom that to stand for what's right, even when you're standing alone, he didn't stand alone tonight. He stood with Colin, he stood with tons of other parents. No one's here to watch it because, you know, you guys were talking about other matters, and that's appropriate, and I respect that. But it's just unacceptable, guys. Think about it. I, I teach my child, I have two kids, I teach them that they have a higher power that they have to look up to and answer to. And you guys all do too, whether it's the same, the same God I believe in or not, you guys all do too. Can you look at your kids and say, hey, yeah, you know what, tonight, we had a meeting, and we just let go some of the best teachers in the district? We just motioned to have them not here anymore because of this mandated testing? Do you guys, I mean, we could go on and on about how goofy some of this stuff is, but I'm going to leave that aside. Anyone can do their own research. But things shouldn't be forced on people, especially for religious beliefs, for moral convictions. And it's not helping our kids. I have neighbors that are in school, and I know my time's just about up. I have neighbors in school, and I talk to them, and, oh, yeah, one of the kids in our school got COVID. We have to mask up. We can't be around that little girl. Oh, what about, what's going to happen when they're not the vaccinated ones? And now Pfizer's rolling out this stuff, saying things are safe for people. But if you guys go look at the VAERS report, if there's one thing you do, go look at VAERS reports. Go look at all of these things, and you'll see what's going on with this vaccine. And I guess that's all I have to say. Do your own research. But it's really, my dad walked out. I stayed here because I wanted to say something about it because that's standing up for what's right, even when no one else does. Think about the kids, please.
All right. Future agenda items, it's topics with dates to be determined. All right, are there any further? Because we're, okay, this is the last one. Mary Ann Zaleski.
Good evening. Unfortunately, the lady that's just leaving is realizing that everything that she just had to say is falling on deaf ears. You guys are not going to do anything different than what the governor says to do. We know this. We know this. There is zero bravery in any of you to do anything different than what the governor's going to tell you to do. And we all know where the next thing is going to be. Let's be honest about this. We know where this is going. The next thing, we have the vaccine rolling out for the five to eleven-year-olds, right? So now we're going to incentivize that next, right? We're going to change things up in our schools. We're going to make sure our five-year-olds get this vaccine, even though there is not enough long-term data on this. There's not. But don't worry, our governor is probably going to mandate it at some point within the next year. This conversation will be had, for sure, but you're going to do nothing different because what we have to say doesn't matter. Us parents, we don't get choices anymore. It doesn't matter whether we have religious beliefs or not. Let's be honest about this. Our governor is our god. Our governor tells us what we should believe and what we should do. Now, in terms of why I'm up here, I want to ask you a quick question and do some research on it. Your shield testing that you're about to roll out, have you watched even the demonstration video? It's on their website. Go ahead and watch it. Do you know what it looks like to watch little kids drool and spit into a tube? Next week, when it rolls out, I encourage each one of you to take time out of your day and go watch these little kids drool into something and see how long it takes them to do that. It's dehumanizing. I have friends that teach in other districts who have this happening right now, and they said it's a dehumanizing process. It's disgusting. And this is somebody who I respect as a teacher, and she straight up said that. So I want each one of you to do your duty and go watch your students drool into test tubes in the next week and see how great it is, right? But don't worry, you're not going to do anything different, right? Because that's what the governor tells you to do. I feel bad for this teacher, a good person, a good teacher. You're losing. And then you're going to stand here and tell everybody, oh, hey, we need subs. Really? Really? Like, seriously? Oh, and you want some of us former teachers to, like, sign up for that? No. No. We're not going to stand up for that. You guys figure it out amongst yourselves. You're not standing up for anybody over here. This is all unprecedented. But I'm just wondering at what point all of you are going to stand up for what's right. That's it.
All right, future agenda items and topics with dates to be determined. Sorry, we moved on. We moved on to the next agenda item.
We'll save it for the next one. You can hand it to Lana. She can save it for the next one. So in terms of topics with dates to be determined, there is a policy that we have that does give community members the opportunity to request items for the board to consider for future agendas. So there was one submitted for the board to consider a motion to overrule the governor's vaccine testing order, protect the privacy of our teachers, prohibit the discrimination of our teachers based on vaccination status, protect their jobs in District 25 regardless of vaccination status or compliance to mandated testing of healthy teachers due to their private decisions about their health. When something like this is submitted, it must be submitted to the superintendent with at least two weeks prior to when it would be put on as a future topic to consider. And so at this point, it would be for the board to determine, is this an item that you feel should be on a future agenda? I would just remind the board that there is an executive order that we have discussed these topics previously, but it would be up to the board to determine if this is something that you feel needs further discussion or action at an upcoming meeting.
Comments or questions?
Mr. President, I think, I'm not sure I agree with the motion part of it, because I think we were pretty understood where we were maybe limited to our thought process. But, you know, I'm wondering if really the topic of discussion is, one thing we talked about is that, you know, our metrics are going to be moving, hopefully downward. And, you know, I'm wondering if we truly bring that up in the discussion and then see where we are. So as an example, if locally here, we're, you know, down to very, very low and we're still being mandated, that might be an opportunity for us to take some type of action that we have the authority to do as a board and maybe have a conversation around that versus saying we're not following it, but there are other things that we could do as a board.
Yeah, and I would say that, right, that's something that we could always have on an agenda. What we need to respond to this specific request is, is do you feel that this request to create a motion to overrule that executive order is something that the board wants on an upcoming agenda?
Mr. President?
Yes, correct.
Just to clarify, then, our process here, we are not, you're just looking for a sense?
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not, yeah, we're not making a motion to, to over, at this point. This is just to entertain the, the request to have a motion to overrule the governor's vaccine in a future meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes, Gina.
I'd like to defer that until, the only thing COVID has shown us is that we are going to be in this constant reactionary changing mode. And if all of a sudden executive orders change, or if all of a sudden the Supreme Court rules that, that these things need to shift or sway or change, or if all of a sudden we find that we live in a community that has ninety-nine percent vaccination rates, I think that we have to be cognizant of the fact that the only guarantee we have with COVID is that it's not going to be the same twenty-four hours later. Now, do I think that we need to entertain a motion and set a date for it at this point? I don't know that I'm there yet. But at the same time, do I think that at some point there are going to have to be decisions made at a local level? I think it's going to come back to the local level, yes. I just don't know when.
So basically, in terms of what Gina is saying for procedure, that would, just so you know, interpret as, we're not going to add this to an agenda at this time, a board member could always talk to the board president in the future about adding an agenda.
I know we have the general board meeting topics scheduled. Is that, you're just saying where that would be probably in fall, put on the schedule for fall? Do, would be tabled, or is that something that we just?
Sorry, play again.
So what you're, you're saying is that it's not necessarily now, but it's, it's in our, it's in our kind of bag of what we can use later on?
Right, at any time, the, right, as the board president, you can determine that agenda. So, but in response to this, what I hear Gina saying is, no, this isn't something, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that we would put on the agenda, but you know that you can always, as a board member, bring it up at a future time.
But we, so what's included is this general board meeting topics?
Oh, thank you. So this wouldn't necessarily go on the general board meeting topic?
Okay, but this is just something we have.
This is more specific to an upcoming meeting?
Yes, okay. All right.
And then the, sorry, was there any other thoughts on that one? And then the other item is just a reminder that there was a request for us to bring forward the plan for migrant students. We're still working on that, working with many districts around us. One district in particular that we know has a migrant student population and trying to understand their process and how we might apply that here. So we will come back to.
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg.
I'm sorry, I'm still, I'm not clear on what we are, are or not doing with that motion. I understand, and I actually agree with Gina here, that we, things will change, and we will be discussing things in the future, but I think, are we saying we're setting aside that particular motion at this time?
Not adding it to agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Then, something maybe, Lori, that would help, because I think now I better realize the document. So this is the general board meeting topics. And maybe I was misunderstanding that particular piece. Could we add that, if we're going to add a general topic, can we add it to this? So, for example, one of the things that I didn't see on here was full-day kindergarten, knowing that that's a special topic. It's not a general topic that has a recurring, you know, process. So to me, this is helpful to say, okay, this is when we should probably plan on seeing that. So if we, if we have a topic that we know we're going to talk about, is to add it on to this document. That would be helpful, at least to me.
Those, from our perspective, are reoccurring annual topics.
Yep.
Right? So if it's something that you believe is, every year, we're going to talk about a topic that's not on there, I think that would be something where we would add it there, where this could, could also be new topics that, you know, that the board has asked us or the community has asked us to consider.
Yeah, that's where I think that would be helpful to put on here, as well as those topics that, again, knowing that, yeah, there's always a topic that may come up, but for example, just knowing that for this school year, right, we'll, we'll plan on hearing about full-day kindergarten sometime in the winter, right, if I think that was, that was when the plan was. That way, we can at least know, we'll all forget about when we think we're going to hear something, and just having that type of general, large topic on to the quarter that we think we're going to hear that in would be beneficial.
So are you saying turn this, right now, this general topic list, you could put any year on it? You could put 2021, 2025. These happen every single year.
Agreed.
Are you saying to create one for this current year?
Yes, yes. Because that's why I thought this was more of a work, a working document, meaning, oh, okay, we're adding this on, we're going to take this off, we're shifting it from this period to that period.
And that's where I referenced that. I thought maybe we'd throw that on there as a potential. I'm sorry to mean that.
Yeah.
I hear you. So maybe we'll make a two-column thing that has a specific year for additional topics. Thank you.
Yep, that would be helpful. Then on the topic of maybe adding, I think, we, earlier we talked about Special Olympics. I think having an update on how that planning is going as appropriate, probably sometime in the early spring before, or whenever you guys think is appropriate might be beneficial, so that we know, as it's being a first-time event, you know, what needs to occur with that. Another one. Go ahead, Gina.
I wanted to camp on the Special Olympics.
Okay, go ahead.
That might be an interesting opportunity to grow our community partnerships and see if maybe Dr. Hackett or somebody from NSSEO, who is more advanced into the Special Olympics space than we are, would come and maybe even talk to us about it and what they have going as that partnership.
Yeah, I'm sure we could. Again, we, again, we have some staff members who have been working with Special Olympics for over a decade as well, and NWSRA, who our students' families currently participate in Special Olympics with. But if you'd like to hear from some more people like, you know, Dr. Hackett or NWSRA, we can surely bring them in.
I think it would be interesting, there is discussion with the NSSEO team of using the new playground at Minor as potential events for Special Olympics and all of the work that was, that was done, because that's still one of our buildings, right, that was done as a, as a partnership all by itself. So that playground for everybody that has been built could be another interesting opportunity to look at.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I had another one to add. I know we were talking about, earlier today, we're talking about budgets, and I believe it would be probably behoove us to take a look at two, or at least one of our policies, which is Four Dash Ten for Compton, fiscal business management that outlines our, our budget process. That one, if, if I understand correctly, hasn't been reviewed since 2015, so it may warrant us to take a look at. There's another policy that, again, it's great, the ISBE Journal references, that we don't have Four Colon Twenty fund balance that might be appropriate to look at. And I'd ask if my colleague Gina and I would take point to relook at those and then bring something forward to the, to the board in terms of how to look at budgets.
Just so that I understand, so possibly bring Four Ten and Four Twenty. Help me understand, did you say that, that two board members would make suggestions on those? I missed that part.
Yeah, would look at those, take point in looking at those two, and as a precursor to bringing it before the board.
And if we're going to do that, I'm fine with that. Just a reminder that the board, we had this discussion about a policy committee, and I think Anisha asked again about it recently. And the board determined that rather than have a policy committee, that the board would rather do the first reading and second reading process with all board members involved. Not that a board member can't still look at a policy and make suggestions, but I guess I'm just wanting direction from the board as a whole. Are you wanting to create, go back to the process or go to a process that we talked about before, where there would be two members of the board that would create a policy committee to review policies before coming to the board? Or do you want to stay with the process that you asked us to stay with the last time we talked about it?
Mr. President?
Yes, Greg.
Would there, would anything get in the way of what Rich is suggesting, if we still did the first and second reading? I mean, there's, we could still honor what you're suggesting, right?
Sure.
And continue with the process?
Absolutely. Anybody can, you know, look at a policy as an individual or with two before we, you know, put it on for, in front of the whole board, for sure.
So I think the, the spirit, Mr. President, of what we're, we're looking at is we have a dated policy that maybe we, it would be prudent for us to review, as its last review was 2015. Process can be standard process, or, because between first and second reading, we have the ability to make the comments, and if we wanted to look at it individually or in, in pairs, could certainly be something that could be done.
Can I, can I just say, so board policy Four Colon Ten, everything in it aligns with the school code and the law? So IS, IASB wouldn't propose any changes to it unless there was a change in the laws, so there hasn't been. So I'm happy to have it reviewed as long as we don't, as long as we realize that the dates and the timelines in there align with the law, and we can't change those.
Understood. But there's probably other things that could be added to that that are more in terms of practice, especially in terms of just reading the journal articles that, that talk about it.
I have a clarification question. So, because I know Dr. Ben explained the press, you know, how we, that the press helps us from ISB, right? So, so you're saying this policy, we don't have it at all, correct? Is that what you're saying?
We, we don't have one policy, Four Colon Twenty, we don't have. It's in the press pal, or they reference it and talk about it, but we don't have that policy.
So then, if we continue to use the process that we have, how would that work? Would you go to press, pull that policy, bring it to the board like we do on first and second reading?
There's a couple of options. So, you know, we can definitely look at what press has, and anything that they have that we're not utilizing, we could bring to the board to consider. If we, if we make changes to a policy that are, which we have every right to do, that are individual, we then, in most situations, would reach out to our attorney and have our attorney review those and just pay those attorney fees separately as opposed to part of our process through press that we already subscribe to.
Okay, no, thanks for explaining. So it seems like if we just use our process, and then it'd be, like, when we have the expertise to look at it further, just like the first reading and second reading, like Greg was saying, so now I'm repeating everything just to understand it better. So, thank you.
All right, anything else? And I'm not clear, did that fall under topics to be determined or new topics? Because...
Let me go back.
I don't know. It was kind of, it was kind of like, it was just an easy transition into the, the agenda items, but I think that kind of...
Yeah, I think we, we stepped into new topics.
It was a natural, natural kind of dip into the pool. Okay, well, all right, well, we, two birds with one stone there in Section sixteen. Going back to community input, I noticed we had one more, and with the interest of time, we were moving forward, but we'd like to get you in. So if we have that blue slip, I'd like to, to call. If you can stand up and introduce yourself in the meantime, I appreciate it. But it was, well, I didn't want it to have people keep flowing in, but thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Juliet Craig, and I'm the wife of Colin Craig. And I know that he does... that he did not feel like he was able to say everything that he wanted to say tonight. So I know he's a little bit bummed, especially after dedicating half of his life to really, really loving this community. We go to church in this community. We, our daughter used to, actually goes to school in this community. And he was fresh out of college when he stepped in at Thomas Middle School. And I just want to tell you, I know you don't know this about him, but I know you have a lot of dedicated teachers. But I will tell you, as his wife of 12 years, that he has loved his time at Thomas Middle School. He is one of those teachers that you would think that after all these years, that he would just, okay, I'll just do a lesson that I've done already. He is not that type of teacher. He is one who is always reinventing the wheel, always making things new and fresh, and wanting to make sure that lessons that he teaches his, used to be sixth graders, now eighth graders, are ones that will impact the rest of their life. Because he understands the gravity of his role in pouring into this next generation. And so, all, that's, that's really all I wanted to share with you, is that being his wife of this many years, and having worked with Brian for many of them, he loved his time here. And it pains me that it could be his last day tomorrow. So I thank all of you, but I also encourage you to hear all of these things that were shared tonight. Like, one of them had said, I cannot imagine the role that you are in and the decisions that you have to make as a school board. I cannot imagine. I don't know that I want to be in your shoes. But I truly do implore you to think about families, to think about these kids, to think about these teachers, and think about the impact that your decisions are making. So I thank you. It was a privilege to be a part of this community for 16 years. Thank you.
Thank you. In wrapping up tonight, that was our last, before we go back into closed session for some more conversation, just, you know, we don't take these decisions lightly. I know every board member here devotes, I think, way more time than we thought we were going to invest specifically lately. So I just want to reiterate that these decisions are very tough, and we do take the time to consider everyone involved. And this is a rough time, but I think as long as we keep pushing forward and working together, I think we're going to, we're going to get through this and do the right thing that's the best for the district and the best for our kids moving forward. So just a sense of encouragement for all the board members here, hang in there. And if anybody has anything else to say before closed session, that's all I got, and we can go make, have some more discussion. All right, can I get a motion to move into closed session?
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn into closed session.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. All in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. We are in closed session. Thank you all for coming. We are going to be there for a little bit, and then we'll come back out and break the meeting.